...that we made, but we have a very rich heritage and we're very proud of our heritage and we'd like to celebrate it. This year, we're bringing a lady that was here a couple of years ago from North Carolina, and she does an exhibit that travels from Africa to the White House. And how educational it is. She has a lot of inventions that were made by African-Americans, a lot of contributions that were made by African-Americans, and she's going to display it here at the Board of Education building, starting Thursday. We thank you for allowing us to be able to do that. We're hoping we're going to do it Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and we're hoping that the general public, the school systems, will be able to come out and see this educational project. She does a fantastic job of doing that. She tries to highlight some of the contributions of African-Americans in West Virginia. Carter G. Woodson from Huntington, West Virginia, the father of Black History Month. Leon Sullivan from Charleston, West Virginia. He was the first African-American to serve on the General Motors Board. And he's also responsible for the Sullivan Plan, which they took to South Africa and to... there. And many, many more. The Niagara Movement was started here in West Virginia. The Niagara Movement later became the NAACP, and it was in Harpers Ferry, West Virginia. So there's a lot of African-American history here in West Virginia, and we want to highlight that history. And so we're going to be doing that here, this starting Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and it's free to the general public. We want them to come out and look at that and go back and learn a little bit about our history. We feel like that you'll gain a lot more respect for African-Americans and the contributions that we've made if you learn something about it. And we really feel like, for a number of reasons, that we were left out of the history books, and we want to make sure that the contributions of African-Americans throughout is known. Also, I want to make mention that there's going to be a celebration of the woman, and there's going to be a celebration across the street, at the church across the street, and they're going to be recognizing Victor L. Stall Monroe. She was a longtime teacher at Kelly Miller. She was one of the first graduates of West Virginia University, and she was a longtime librarian at West Virginia University. And they're going to do a presentation on her at the...
Harrison County Historic...
No, but they're going to be doing it at the church across the street. What is it? Episcopal Church. Episcopal Church at seven o'clock on Wednesday, and I think if you have an opportunity, I think it would be very rewarding for you to do that also. Also following me is going to be Mr. Green, and I support him too. I'm on that board that he's on too, so whatever he's doing, I support also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. That brings us down to our delegations, and our first delegations, Mr. Hal Green, if you would please come and...
He actually has his wife who's going to be...
Oh, okay. His wife's going to speak for it. All right. No problem.
I'm here on... Is that going through?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of the Harrison County YMCA. We requested by a letter a few months ago after the deadline for budget, an increase for the... from the Board of Education for the aquatics that we provide for all of the high school swim teams in the county. We've been receiving about $10,000 a year for 15 or 20 years. And to keep it simple, the costs have all gone up. Labor costs go up. Minimum wage is close to $9 now. Cost of chemicals, just in general, running a facility has gone up, and so I requested that we get an increase from the Board. I'd like for you to consider that. And we have made a lot of improvements at the Y, and we have a new CEO that's been in place about eight weeks now, and I'm now the president of the Board. I stepped down as the CEO eight weeks ago. But we're moving forward, and we've got a lot of, I think, aggressive ideas of expanding the Y. We're talking about the city of Fairmont, Morgantown. I'm not going to go too crazy here, but downtown Clarksburg, having a presence down here, which we think is important. And we're looking at, as a business person, we're looking at revenues, but we're also looking at what our mission is, to serve the community. And most of the ideas we have, and the fellow that is the CEO is 68 years old and been in the Y movement his whole life. He and I have hit it off very well, and we're developing ideas that we think will take the Y, stabilize it, and grow it. And so, and we do appreciate the support of the Board over the years, but I'd like to... Well, I can entertain some questions now, if anybody has any.
I would like to say that I think the Y is an amazing entity, and I think that they do a lot for the youth, so I am not opposed to discussing an increase. I'd like to see Dr. Manchin find some money, if there's any availability, and bring a recommendation to us as to how much...
I'd like to see him do it.
How much, as to how much we could possibly increase it by, and to see what we could do, and have him bring a recommendation to us as a Board to see if we could support that.
What was the increase from $10,000 to...
I think, actually, I wrote the letter with three different items on it, so I'll just refer to it, because I guess you all have that from back in May, I believe. I had... We got $10,000, but I was looking at $70,000, but that wasn't solely for the aquatic side of it. We are also doing a mentoring program that is sort of coming from the community, and we're joining in with it. We volunteered to use our facility for people. It's almost a big brothers, big sisters type situation, and it hasn't gotten off the ground yet, but there's a core of people that are involved in trying to get it launched. The Y would be a place where these people can bring young people that are really in need. I threw out, I deliberately threw out an idea that I would hope might blossom in the future, and that is that the county could have buses that bring kids up to the Y. We don't do that very much. I don't believe it's... It may have happened in the last 35 years that the building... We have a wonderful building. The pool is wonderful. And between 8:30 and 2:30, 3 o'clock every day, we could have a lot of kids come up and use the pool and the gym, and as I wrote in the letter, and I also discussed with several people, the... We could have curriculum up there. I myself am sort of a NASA guy, and so I said we could have, you know, things where we were talking to the space station or to astronauts, or we could have visitors, that type of thing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And we want to thank you, Hal, for recently, I guess a couple of weeks ago, we went up to your dealership, and you provided us some money for our grant families program, which we very, very appreciate. That was really a nice gesture under your pardon, your organization. We're very appreciative of that. It's a great program. I think one of the better, I think you agree, one of the best programs we have in this county.
Yeah. You know, I wasn't part of that decision, actually. My kids were, the boys running the store, and I was proud that they saw that as an important gesture to make.
It was really nice.
Yes, truly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next delegation is Mr. Neil Hurd.
Good evening, Dr. Manchin, Mr. Tavano, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here along with other members of the AFT to speak on the proposed changes to the attendance policy. As you all know, I've been the AFT rep for Harrison County for, I think this is my sixth year now, and I can count on one hand how many times I have had to meet with personnel over a person with chronic absences. It's that few, it's that few times that I've had to actually have a meeting over chronic absences. The policy, at least as I've read it so far, feels kind of familiar to me in that it reminds me of the Lewis County Dress Code. In Lewis County, they instituted a dress code over the fact that there were a few people who were not following professional dress, and they made some overarching sweeping changes. That affected everyone. I think what we really would like to see here is that if there is going to be changes to the attendance policy, number one, that it's fair, that it's equitable, but if there are people who are currently abusing the system that you currently have in place, then those people, that lands on the administration to handle those few instances where we have problems. You already have policies in place. I know I've met with Donna before about people who were going over their days, and, like I said, it's so few and far between. I don't think that we need to make some kind of a large overarching change that will affect everyone in the county when you already have something in place and there's only a few people who may be abusing the system. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Our next delegation is Tonya Reinhardt.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Tonya Reinhardt. If you guys don't know me, I am a teacher at Nutterford Primary. I'm also Vice President of AFT Harrison, and I did want to come and speak about the proposed changes to the personal leave policy that is out for comment. There is some language in there that I do find concerning. There's one piece that is defining abuse of sick leave, and it says falsely reporting that sick leave is being used for that purpose when the employee is not actually sick. I find that that language is kind of ambiguous and open to interpretation. Again, I'm elementary, and one of the great things about the start of the year this year was that we, as elementary school employees, because it wasn't just teachers, but we had a full day talking about trauma, not just student trauma, but our own trauma. So, you know, there are going to be times when school employees are going to need to take maybe a sick day as a mental health day, and this job is extremely stressful. We've talked about this over and over again, how teachers are really at the forefront of the societal pressures and stressors within their classroom, and really under-resourced, even though we're trying to help them as much as possible. But if a teacher needs a break on a certain day just to veg out, you know, to do something to put into them so that they're better equipped and refreshed to come back the next day, then they should be allowed to do that. So, you know, I don't know that we can necessarily look at a person and say, "Yeah, I think that they are sick," or "They're not sick." I think that's open to a whole lot of interpretation. And then who's going to be the person that decides that? That person looks sick or isn't sick. I know that another thing that was of concern, I've had some different service personnel speak to me, you know, we have a lot of employees who have younger children, myself included. So, you know, if they're sick, I may need to take a day off for them. Some of this language in here states that your immediate supervisor, at any point in time, for any reason at their discretion, can ask for a doctor's note. Well, not every time may I be taking my child to the doctor if they just need a day off. I mean, and I got this from my child's school about being a little bit more intentional about keeping your kids at home when there are certain symptoms, not coming back within 24 hours after a fever. So, you know, and I think too, we have, you know, like I said, some service personnel had spoken to me about aging parents. You know, they may have to take a day to take their aging parents to a doctor's appointment, so now are they going to be expected to get a doctor's excuse every time? If I have to take a day, you know, just for myself, but I feel like I have to get a doctor's excuse to cover me because I don't know if my administrator's going to ask for it or not, you know, there's also that, now I've got to pay a copay, you know, just to make sure that I'm covered. So, you know, people may not be able to afford that $25, up to $40 a pop every time that they need to go in, just so that they're covered to get that doctor's excuse. I know one thing that I circled down here, you know, students with live lice may not return to school without appropriate treatment. We had at least two of our teachers last year come or get lice from their students in their classroom. So then, you know, is that going to affect them as well with they're not allowed to come back until they're sure that they don't have live lice? So, you know, there are all these factors, and I know some of my colleagues are going to address those as well. But some of that new language, you know, certainly is a concern. I think that it's a little open-ended, and I think that people are feeling as though they're maybe being punished by it because of a few. So, thank you for giving me the chance to speak to that.
Thank you, Tonya. All right. Next, we have Gina Williams.
My name's Gina Williams, and I'm a special ed teacher at... I just changed schools, so I just went from Lumberport Elementary, and I'm on the AFT Harrison Executive Board, and these microphones make me very nervous, so I'm sorry. If you'll indulge me for just a minute, I feel like I need to give you a little bit of personal background so that you can understand where I'm coming from with this policy. 10 years ago, I was living in Charleston, West Virginia, and I had had my daughter, Aubrey, and a month later, my brother was tragically killed. And I started therapy and going to see my doctor that week, so it's been 10 years, and that's been wonderful. It's been what I needed to be able to do. Well, now I'm in Harrison County, and I've had this relationship with my doctor and my therapist for 10 years, and that's a lot of work and hard work that you've put into that. And so, I still travel back to Charleston for my doctor's appointments. I try to get them when we have spring break, when we have Thanksgiving break, you know, as much as I can, but it's not always possible. So I try to get my appointments on Mondays so that it's not a midweek interruption for my students. But according to this policy, if you have a pattern of absences that revolve around a holiday, or a Monday, or a Friday, then that could be called into question. PEA now, and I don't know if you all are aware of this, but they will not pay for two providers from the same doctor's office. So if I tried to schedule an appointment with my therapist and my doctor, and they are at the same office, PEA will not pay for that because it's the same day. So that means I have to take, I have to make two separate appointments. Like I said, I try as best as I can to get it whenever we don't have school so that it doesn't interrupt my students, but sometimes I can't help it. And so there are several times during the year that I have to do that. And I, of course, always get a doctor's excuse, but at the same time, I shouldn't have to feel like that I'm being investigated about my illnesses or whatever's going on because somebody may not believe me or something of that effect. In my classroom, I would never punish my entire classroom for the actions of two or three kids. That's just not the way that I would manage my class. And if what Neil is saying is accurate, with only one case of chronic absences over a six-year period, I feel like that that's what this policy could be doing, is punishing the masses for what one or two people may be actually doing in the county. I want to reiterate what Tonya said about the PD we had when we came back to school. It was amazing. It was the most beneficial professional development that I've probably ever been to in Canal County or here, and I appreciate you all doing that. And the speaker spoke to us about compassion fatigue and burnout, and what's the difference? And what can you do to make sure that these things are not affecting you in a way that you can't do your job? And it definitely can. I mean, we're suffering second-degree trauma, and that's proven in fire, police, people that are in the helping professions. And so we have to be able to take care of ourselves. And if that means that we need to go see a doctor, then that's great, but if that means that, you know, you're just having a hard time and you need a break, then I think that you should be able to take that break. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Then last, we have Kelly Shuttlesworth.
We're going to pretend like y'all said it to us for last...
We did, intentionally.
Okay. Hi. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you guys. I come before you today to share some of the concerns of Harrison County employees regarding the proposed revisions to the employee attendance policy. I feel like I need to share a personal story with you about something that happened in my life, and I'm going to try really hard not to get teared up. Two years ago, my oldest child was diagnosed as a type 1 diabetic. That year, I missed 17 days of school, not because I was blowing off work, but because my child was in the hospital. We had health issues we had to take care of, and according to this policy and the language in this policy, if somebody had felt that my absences comprised a pattern, the county would have had carte blanche to investigate and punish me as arbitrarily as they saw fit. And I feel like that's part of the problem with the language in this policy, is it's very subjective. It's, there's, I mean, it's just kind of up to the discretion of the administrators, which is okay unless you have a situation where maybe an administrator doesn't like a particular teacher, and they use this policy as a chance to kind of maybe make this person jump through a few more hoops than they should have to with bringing notes and everything in. And I'm going to just, let's take a step back for a moment and look at how this all came about. It's because the legislature didn't do their job this year. The West Virginia Legislature is not doing their job, and they are passing legislation designed to fracture the school substitute system at the state and county levels. Please do not allow their ineptitude to cause you to pass bad policy that's going to punish laborers, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I... We normally don't interact with delegations, but since this is... I'll ask that I can speak.
You can speak.
Since this is on 30-day comment period as we speak, is there any way between now and that comment period is up, if Dr. Manchin can meet with the employee representatives from the unions? Because I don't like the language in here, and basically, the more I'm thinking about it, what's happening is what we're hearing is that the administrators aren't doing their job on disciplining those who are absentee and chronic absentee. So now we're going to say, well, now I've got carte blanche to just do it to anyone who may not have been absentee chronically for the past three or four years, but I don't really like this person, so I don't like the language. About the only thing that makes sense is, you know, after three or five days that you bring in a doctor's excuse. That's probably the only thing that I could live with, and that doesn't even, that's not always, you know, applicable when it comes to other, I guess, you know, when it comes to your child or something like that. But I do see it, you know, we do have the problem where we have some absentee, but I think it goes back to what we said before, that it probably needs to come out of the central office and go back to the school and let them do their job, the principal do their job and take care of it. We wouldn't be in this situation. So if you can get with, I mean, we've got another two weeks on this, and maybe get with them and see if there's anything part of this they can live with or what we want to do, and then, because otherwise, I probably, I mean, I know that in its current form, I'm not supporting it.
Will do. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a few, I made my comments last meeting on this, and since then, I have a few more thoughts on it. You know, I said from the very beginning, I've experienced this as a sub for chronic, you know, what we're trying to correct, and it is only a few, and it should be done at the administrator, and it should go back to the state legislature that caused this. But with that being said, I also feel that we're borderline on HIPAA violations when we're getting into their personal, you know, health reasons and all that, which I have an issue with that. And I agree with, like, when a child gets sick, and, I mean, if you're a teacher, is also a mother, and they have to be there. And I also know, not only because of my condition now, but before this, I had to take care of my parents. So there are so many issues on here, and the bottom line is, is they have these days because they were in school. It's, and I feel like we're punishing people for doing good, because that's why you have the days. And so, I'm just totally against it, and I really think it needs to be resolved at a state level, and I don't think us as a Board, we should be basically policing our professionals. I mean, I just feel that way.
Our biggest issue, it would be addressed if the legislature would incentivize...
Yeah, and the administrators need to take care of it.
Yeah, I'm in the old retirement system, so I save my sick leave because it counts toward my retirement. Newer hires, it doesn't, so they can fix that really quick.
Exactly. Now, with that being said, with what Gary said, meeting, I would love to hear some creative ideas about this, and I'm sure everyone on the Board would like to hear some creative ideas that could help resolve, you know, both issues if need be. But I don't think it should be a penalty towards our professionals, and that's just my feeling, and I felt that way. I just, I'm not for this as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. There are no further delegations at this point in time. This takes us down to the superintendent's update. Mr. President, tomorrow, we will be, under some of the things that we'll be doing tomorrow, we'll be dedicating the new aerospace program, which I believe, over the next several years, could have an incredible impact on how we prepare our students for the future. I think traditionally, what we've said over the years is that you need to go to college in order to be successful, and that's still a viable option. But, and I'll say this tomorrow, and one of the statistics that I have gathered over these last several months is that nearly 70% of all new jobs will be created here in West Virginia and nationally do not require four-year college degree. And in fact, 2/3 of those who do have college degrees have not utilized their college degrees, and they're in debt, and the time and effort. So tomorrow, what I'd like to think is the start of a journey that perhaps in 10, 15 years, who knows, will take Harrison County down that path where we'll be providing our students with the ability to go here in Harrison County and attend a program that will allow them to either walk across the stage and be able to get a good-paying job with a certain certification that we're working on, or a licensure that we're working on, or at least one additional year. I think you could get a commitment. I spoke today, Donna and I were over at Bridgeport, and by the way, this is at Bridgeport, but it's for the county, is that many of those students, I don't know if they were, I don't know if they were, you know, coached or what, but they, it's their career. They really want to do, they really want, and can you imagine entry level? And our teachers are here, we have the greatest respect for you all, that we're talking entry level 45 to 50,000. Can you, yeah, starting teachers, starting teachers, what, 35? You know, so, and we really need to move in that direction, so we're very pleased that tomorrow we'll be cutting a ribbon and starting with that program, the aerospace program. We have four Fortune 500 companies right here in Harrison County in the aerospace industry, four, and that are, that want to hire. It's my understanding Mitsubishi is going to be working with one of those companies and going to create 250 more jobs, good-paying jobs.
I've heard up to 800.
Could be. I heard 250, but regardless, the first question, because I had Senator Romano in my office today, we were talking about this, and the first question they asked, do you have an educated workforce? Do you have a workforce that we can provide? And I think that is critical to us to be successful. And so tomorrow, we'll be starting that, what I think is a journey that will take us to not only aerospace, but will also take us to the oil and gas industry, will take us to technology, coding, cybersecurity, cyberbullying, artificial intelligence, myriad of things that I think will be very, very beneficial, that... of things that I think will be very, very beneficial, that we can get our kids, as soon as they leave, as soon as they leave Harrison County schools, that they can conceivably get a job because they have the necessary training and certification and licensure or one additional year, perhaps at Pierpont. Perhaps we can even do grade 13, which I'd like to do. So, Mr. President, we'll be starting down that path tomorrow, I'd like to think of that. Jimmy, you want to touch base on last week, yeah, was it last week? We had the School Building Authority in town and took them around, and you want to give an update on that?
Sure. You want?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, yeah, the School Building Authority was in town last week, and they visited the site of the potential Gore Elementary School project. And they also went through very quickly and took a look at the Wilsonburg and also Adamson schools. Had a very good visit. I believe they liked the project in general. We had several of our people, along with Dr. Manchin, that went along, asked a lot of questions, so they showed some real interest in that.
Why don't you give, Jimmy, give us a timeline, if you would please, on the CEFP, which, and particularly the, well, the MIP and the new proposed, all of them are coming together. The MIP and the needs project.
Yeah, the MIP project, we're getting very close to the design phase now, so we'll be sitting down with everyone and closest to Dr. Manchin, along with the architects, and begin with working in the community and the school staff to start designing how that project may look. And I know Dr. Manchin's been very clear with working with the architect, that they want to eliminate taking little, if any, of the existing facilities of the South Harrison Middle School.
We did, Jimmy, we did have the opportunity last, I guess it was last week, to visit South Harrison Middle and speak to them. And I thought it was fruitful. I expressed the concern of the board, that their directive to me, that to, if possible, now, I don't know if it's possible, and still keep it within any kind of reasonable budget, but to reduce the amount of space that we need to utilize in the existing South Harrison Middle School.
And I was out there, and they seemed receptive to the fact that, I think they realized that Dr. Manchin's doing everything he can do to work with the board, and the board's given that directive. We had early dismissal last week, and so I went out as we had to, you know, get about 700 kids off campus due to water line break. So, the faculty seemed very receptive. They had some questions of me, minimal, but they seemed very positive that they had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Manchin and also the board directive.
Are there any questions?
Well, I, one thing that I think really needs to be considered is that the kitchen at South Harrison Middle School should become a full-fledged kitchen with the new elementary kids going to be there. You know, that would take the burden off of, you know, off of the high school, and it puts, you know, the young kids in a cafeteria, you know, to eat their lunch together and what have you, without having the food being brought back and forth. So, I just think that, you know, I think that we need to take a long look at adding, you know, the cooking things into the kitchen and be able to use both kitchens, both the high school and the middle school.
And I think these bids will all be in order, and there'll be plenty of order in bids.
Yeah, that's a good question, and Gary and Doug, that's certainly part of our charge. Over the next 90 days will be the planning phase, we'll be working with particularly Lost Creek Elementary and South Harrison Middle School through the process. Through that whole process, the board, this board will be apprised, will bring the architect in, you can interact, and all of that discussion, and many of the questions that have arisen, just like with the cafeteria, auditorium, things of that nature, are all going to be put on the table, and probably, as Gary has said, probably bid as alternates. And then, that way, you can pull that part of the project out. If it's 800,000, the board, this board can decide, hey, we want to do it that way. There'll be a base bid, and my guess, a minimum of two alternates. And my, I think Frankie, you said something about maybe a gym area.
A gym area.
A gym area.
I want as much space in this new additional facility as possible.
And my guess is that what we'll do is we'll be bringing you alternates with a number, or after they bid it. It'll be a base bid, and it'll be an alternate bid, and that's how then we'll determine on that.
And the high school will be involved in that process.
Yeah, the high school will be involved.
Their facility in it. And then, some of our closest people, David C., that's our nutrition supervisor, he certainly has a lot of experience in his time of working with other counties to see, you know, what might be most efficient model of feeding those kids. Efficient, effective, and in a realistic way to make sure that the logistics of all that works through.
And I envision this whole process, the planning phase of this by November, December, before Christmas, so that we can start the, some of the design work, schematics, and the DD phase, and then hopefully, this coming spring and summer, we'll start moving some work. And in this interim period, we'll also be submitting the needs project.
The needs project that we were going to submit, that you'd asked us to work on, it's due on the 13th of next week, so September the 13th. So, we're in the process of having a draft form, going over it with Dr. Manchin and Dr. Hague, and, you know, we have to get everybody involved, personnel, finance, and take a look at, are we going to be ready to move forward with that as it is stated? So, we plan on doing that within the next week, and I hope to get that in Charleston, hopefully, early next week.
When will they announce? When will they review and announce the awards till December?
Yeah, and the superintendent will have an interview between that time with the SBA, and, but it's still, it's in early December that they will award those projects. We feel very positive at this point, but we were positive last year, so, but I think we have a good project to look at.
Is there any new members on the board, the SBA board?
Is there any new members?
Yes.
No, no, I'm aware, same members.
So, you got to do a better job selling.
I got to do a better job, there's no question about it.
All right, thank you.
As far as the CEFP, Mike Pickens began today assessing the facilities, and so he'll be working on that for the next few weeks. And we'll probably have our meeting, our next CEFP meeting, at the end of the month, the end of this month. But we really don't have a lot to move on until they finish the evaluations of the facility. So, as soon as they get that close to completed, then we'll move forward with the next CEFP meeting.
Angela, can you send out a meeting reminder or a meeting notice so that we would all have access to know when that next meeting is?
Absolutely.
For the CEFP committee? Thank you.
And she's been doing that, and we hope to rejuvenate some of the interest from some of our members to get good participation. And it will increase as the closer we get to, you know, the nitty-gritty of the process with the goals and getting closer to taking a look at the facilities and more interest within their communities, it will pick up.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Sure.
Personnel, obviously, we've started school, and from all indications, Mrs. Studdler, you've done an outstanding job in getting the teachers out there. I haven't heard a whole lot about anything, any problems. I guess we have a few still openings, but it's minimal. We talked to, superintendent's met today at Doggerich County, the old RISA we all met, and the issues that they're facing, I was proud to say that we're doing an outstanding job in Harrison County, so I feel pretty good. Personnel, you agree?
We've been fortunate, yeah, we've been fortunate.
All right. So, and Mr. President, other than miscellaneous, that's all I have to offer in superintendent's update.
Okay.
Miscellaneous will be.
Yes. Okay.
All right, and if I may, Mr. President, as you all know, we have, last year, we started a precedent and a, what I like to think, something that's really going to be neat over the years, is you see Kelly Miller, I'll draw your attention, everybody draw your attention to that jersey over there, and when we opened up Robert C. Byrd, what, 40 years ago? How long's it been for Robert C. Byrd?
1996.
I guess that's not 40 years, is it?
Not quite.
I was thinking North Mary.
He must have been math.
Wrong county, but Robert C. Byrd, and the high schools that came out of Robert C. Byrd were Kelly Miller, Washington Irving, Roosevelt Wilson, and Washington Irving, the Hill Poppers, the Prexys Presidents, Kelly Miller, what was Kelly Miller's nickname?
Yellow Jackets.
Yellow Jackets.
Yellow Jackets. So, I've asked Doug Hoag to get off the bench.
Yeah.
Get off the bench here, Doug Hoag, get back in the game.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm going to bring this to Doug Hoag.
Well, he's getting that. First of all, I'd like to say a couple things. One, I think we owe a big thank you to a young man that was on the last, Roosevelt was the basketball team, Chris Mann, who now is an investor, a volleyball player. Children in school, now he's coaching in our middle schools, coaching soccer, you know, and Chris took the initiative to go and approach Billy Bennett, the coach over at Washington Irving, with this idea. And Chris went out and raised funds for new uniforms for each year for the one game for these, this K and V play. And so, he did Kelly Miller, then he went out, he did Roosevelt Wilson, and he's already went out, and the Washington Irving uniforms already been designed, made, and delivered to Coach Bennett. And I think we owe a big gratitude to Coach Billy Bennett for allowing to, you know, give up one of these games and do what we call back a throwback game. And last year, you know, like I said, was Roosevelt Wilson turning. Next year is, this coming year is Washington Irving. I had the privilege of being the last basketball coach in the history of Roosevelt Wilson, and it gave us a surprise that one day we were told that Roosevelt Wilson was going to be closed at the end of the year. Nobody knew, you know, just come in, and God rest his soul, Mr. Kittle, who I have the utmost respect for, made the decision, there was going to be a new school built in the only law in ever passed, and that's where Robert C. Byrd came into existence. And that's when they took the schools, this one had closed earlier, then Roosevelt Wilson closed in 90, and then Washington Irving closed, and Robert C. Byrd opened in 96. And so, like I said, I got the privilege of being the last coach, and fortunately, I also got to be the privilege of being the winningest coach in the history of the school when it ran from 1926 to 1990. As I told them, 24-25, it was called Clark District High School, and then they changed the name to Roosevelt Wilson in 26, and went through, through to 1990. And the last team was also the winningest team in the history of the school. We went 23 and 2. And so, like I said, with that being said, you know, I felt very privileged, you know, not that I felt that I was a great coach, know one thing? I had great kids to work with. They, anything that you asked them to do, I mean, they'd run through the wall. And they had the opportunity to leave Roosevelt Wilson in 89 and go on to Washington Irving with no penalty. And those kids, they asked, they said, what are you going to do? I said, I'm staying, you know. They said, well, you're staying, we're staying. And so, they stayed the 1990 season, you know, as we say, the rest is history. So, but very, very, very privileged.
And a new tradition has started here in Harrison County. As you see Kelly Miller, and now, we have the red and gray of Roosevelt Wilson that will be for Hoag.
Was that the one?
Yeah, well, right here. Okay, well, how about right there?
Did you see Debbie Huzz? Did you see Debbie Huzz?
That's Mary. She shouldn't say three. That's cool.
All right. Yeah, you can clap, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, it'll go right here.
Right here.
Go that way a little bit, and Washington Irving will go here. And then, I think we ought to also try and mount a Robert C. Byrd uniform, but it, with it to show where the three can be able to make that one. And also, as soon as it's got started, I'd like to see county-wide, somebody take the initiative in each area, in the Liberty area and in the Bridgeport area, the South Harrison area, to take, and do the same thing, you know, get somebody, go back and get, you know, raise money to buy the uniforms to play a throwback game where we can put it through, all the way through this thing to show the schools that all of you that make these high schools. If Chris Mann took care of this one, somebody else, you know, we hope will give the initiative to do the same, you know. But I always told people through the years, because I was fortunate, I got to graduate from Roosevelt Wilson in 1970, and then I went back and Ecclewood, I was the coach of basketball, went out the first night, had a great practice, really felt good, and at the end of the practices, I want to see, and I thought, I really did a good job being on the bragging. Well, he told me at the end, after I went to see him, he said, you're done. He said, you know, you're cutting. So, I kind of felt like Michael Jordan. Michael Jordan got cut as a freshman at his high school. Or Michael Jordan ended up. So, but anyway, I always told people, I said, I told, I still see him today, I have all the respect in the world for him, and I told him, I said, I'm going to come back and take your job. And he laughed. Well, fortunately, I did, I got to come back, I got the job, you know. So, it was a great ride. And I tell everybody, there's those, there's two types of people, those who graduated from Roosevelt Wilson and those who wish to quit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you remember your last game, Doug?
Yes. Wheeling Central in the semifinals of the state.
Oh, really?
Yes. We was ranked number one, we was.
Were they double A?
Yes, at that time. We was 23 and 1, and they was like 22 and 1 at that time, and they beat us by five in the semifinal, and then they went on to beat Big Creek Owls in the finals to win the state championship that year. But I will say this, they had five outstanding players, but not one of them was from the Wheeling area. They all was from the perimeters. I'm not saying that the parochial schools recruit.
What are you saying?
You don't hold any grudge, do you?
Like I said, we did, we had a great, we had a great group of kids, and, you know, they went out the right way, went out the right way.
Well, congratulations, that's really nice.
Yep.
And that'll be a tradition, and hopefully someday, we'll have this whole room filled with jerseys of all the schools that have been closed over the years. It's a great tradition.
Victory went into Liberty, right?
Victory went in Salem.
Yeah, Victory, Salem, and Bristol.
Went into Liberty.
South Harrison, Uninus.
Uninus and Lost Creek, I believe.
It was Lost Creek. And Lumberport went into Lincoln.
Lumberport, Shinsen.
Shinsen. And Wallace.
There was a school in Wallace?
Yeah, there was a high school there at one time, yeah.
It was moved into Lumberport, and then from there, then they moved into.
Excuse me?
Wallace went to eighth grade, ninth grade, they had to go to Lincoln or Lumberport.
So, there wasn't, there wasn't a Wallace High School, or there wasn't?
No, there was a Wallace High School.
That's right, okay.
There was one time.
On further back, because we still have the transcripts. The transcripts are at Lincoln High School for those that graduated, Wallace High School.
Wow.
That's a hell of a firm, right? All right. Well, there's, Mr. Hoag has charged the community with a very worthy endeavor, so let's see if we can get him to, get someone to step up and do what needs to be done. So let's see if we can get him to, get someone to step up and do what needs to be done. All right. So is that all for the superintendent's update?
That's it, Mr. President.
Okay, um, there's no more superintendent's update. This brings us down to the consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
Make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Hammerick has made the motion to approve, and Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us down to new business, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty preschool agreements and budgets. Is there a motion to approve the agreements for preschool programs in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as presented by the superintendent? Mr. Doherty, quick on the draw, has made that motion.
I got that, I got that.
Ms. Messenger has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the motion to accept unauthorized payments for bus driver promissory notes. Is there a motion to do this?
So moved.
Mr. Hammerick has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is legal service agreement. Is there a motion to accept the legal service agreements for Bowles Rice, Steptoe and Johnson, and Harris, Wilson, Turner, and Davison P L L C as submitted by the superintendent?
Uh, so moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to accept, is there a second? Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
The only discussion is that these are the same law firms that we have used consistently.
We have used them, and they just want to agree, we don't necessarily have to use them, but this allows.
It's not that we use every one of them, so.
Correct, that's what I was getting at, I mentioned. Okay, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, if I may, just interject very quickly that today we were served, I'm sure you've seen it in the news, the American Civil Rights Union did today submit the issue out of Liberty. We did receive the paper today, and we would take necessary action with our, with our track.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is contract for grandfamilies coordinator. Is there a motion to accept the contract for the grandfamilies coordinator for Pam Hotson Pillar for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
I make the motion.
Ms. Messenger has made the motion to accept, and Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Just one.
Yes.
I thought this on the agenda, and after hearing about the Y and their programs and stuff, I just, and that they have also donated. I, I just am wondering if with the Y, if there is something that, you know, when we're looking at what they propose, that we could put something in there for grandfamilies, and maybe work something, make it a unity project, because the grandfamilies is so, so successful.
And significant to the county.
And it may be, I mean, that's actually a good question, because it may be a case where we want to partner with them, because I know they're using church right now, because they provide, they're providing daycare for the grandparents going there. And the Y may be a place where they can provide daycare with some activities for the kids.
And I'm just thinking, a lot of grandparents don't know what to do with their kids, and taking them to the Y and getting involved. I just, when he was speaking, and you mentioned, you know, that Harry Greens had already made the contribution, I just saw such a wonderful, you know, little project there, and how well they've worked together. And so I just wanted to mention that, and, and I just really think there could be something worked out there to help our grandfamilies and the Y together.
I think that's an excellent idea.
I agree to get Pam to get in touch with town.
Okay, great.
Oh, she'd have a way to get them, let's talk about this.
Sounds good. Okay, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Last item in new business is the out-of-state professional leave requests and travel study requests. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Messenger has made the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammerick has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
The only discussion that I have, not on this one particularly, but I think that's something that we want to take as, as the school year goes through, that we monitor, you know, this out-of-state travel and, and in-state, you know, to make sure that, you know, there is a great need, or is, instead of maybe two, three, four people going, if one person could maybe attend something like that and bring back the information to the other groups?
Hurry, hurry, yeah, that discussion Doug, which you've mentioned before, which I think is very reasonable. There is a bit of a redundancy in that, before it gets to me, before it even makes the agenda, Donna, hey, reviews all of that, interacts, calls, picks up the phone, and, and so by the time it gets to me and the agenda, it's been vetted, it really has been vetted. Don't you want to jump in there at all?
Yeah, some of that travel is funded through the CE Council, the professional CE Council. So that's a committee of educators that look at those travel requests. I know service personnel, Mr. C submits those to Jimmy, and those come along. So there's different committees that look at that travel. But there is a process, as Dr. Manchin said, that routes it to different people.
Well, I mean, I guess I was in the old school, you know, when I taught in thirty-six years. And a lot of times, when there was meetings and what have you, instead of everybody going, they would send one person, then that person would bring back all the information, and sit down and explain where it, you know, say, you know, cost-wise and what have you. Like I said, that's your all's job, and, you know, once it comes to us, if that's, you know, everything's been done that way and looked at that way. I mean, I think somewhere along the way, there's times where maybe not as many need, but I have no problem with it. Once it comes to you and Dr. Manchin stamps it, okay. You know, just the way we're making.
And back on what he said, I mean, I always look at these, but one of the lines that I always look at is the funding source. And I have to say, whatever travel's going on, it's not at the expense of the county.
Correct.
I mean, and so I have a hard time when classrooms get together and kids get together, and there's federal agencies funding, whether they go two or three times. I mean, I, and I look at that, I mean, not that we wouldn't fund something, but that is one, and I want to congratulate her, just really bring note to that, that all the travel, it's not really a cost of our county. People are looking for resources, raising money, like for the kids going on trips and stuff, and it's something to be proud of, so.
Yeah, it's predominantly federal, you're absolutely right.
I mean, I've hardly ever seen where, I'm, that we, as a board, have funded anything for these different projects and travel, so I commend them for that.
The travel is really minimal, given the size of this county. It is, it's really not that much. If I may, Mr. President, one thing I did want to mention is that next week, Donna and I will be in Charleston for, we do have a finalist for the teacher of the year.
Wow.
So we will be in Charleston at the banquet.
The gala, the gala.
The gala.
September eleventh?
September eleventh, so we're really excited about that. We think that we have an outstanding candidate.
Yes, we do.
And she is terrific, and I've heard already some good things about her, don't shout, all shakes out. So we'll be down there next week.
Excellent. Okay. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business, there is no policy updates at this current time. This brings us down to personnel matters. Is there a motion to approve the personnel agenda as recommended by the superintendent?
I need to make a recusal.
Yeah. Go ahead, make your accusations.
My Uncle Thomas Doherty, I think it's on page eleven, twelve, is a bus chopper. I need your recus for him. What do you want to hear of your stuff?
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the personnel agenda as recommended by the superintendent with the noted accusations?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammerick has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
I don't know how to work this computer, so I can't bring it back up. But there was one thing that I did note, that we are still hiring school on, online or communication specialist that we had discussed.
Todd is gonna give his-
Yeah, I think he was gonna talk to-
Oh.
Todd and Jimmy were gonna-
Todd and Jimmy were gonna give their updates, they had it all ready to go tonight, right? Todd resigned, called him tech, Toddie Tech.
No, I'm talking about the positions that we talked about.
No, that's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was part of Todd's presentation. The online communication-
You're back on the table.
Online communication specialist.
You wonder why I'm startled.
Those are still in place this year. And so when they vacate this year, they're, you want to mean they're being refilled, but I believe they're-
Well, then why are we hiring? Why, like, what am I, what are we approving then, if they're on there for a job position? I mean-
There's still that position for each of the buildings and in the building tech.
And I don't think they're on this agenda, are they?
There's probably some-
Yeah, I saw several of them.
Yeah, as they vacate and people are moving, they're being refilled.
Why wouldn't we just vacate them then?
It's not personnel season yet.
Right.
Meaning not the people left, why do we have to?
Job descriptions still have some things in it that needed to be rolled over into the other tech position in the building. So there's still pieces of that job that they need in the building. So I think, I'm not sure what plan he had about addressing the online communications in the buildings.
Well, that position's still in place.
Right, right.
The conversation I, I remembered is if you take all this fifteen hundred dollars and you get one person in charge, we, you know, with communication and marketing, that's the conversation I remembered. Instead of fifteen hundred dollars everywhere, if we hired somebody that actually did the job equally for all schools, and consistently, that that is the path we were going down. Now, I just, I'm just curious, because I know we had this discussion, and then I keep on seeing them. And another thing I saw on there, when we were looking at payroll, were people being paid for lunches, or lunch duties. And I thought we were trying to eliminate some of those as well.
Well, the extracurricular jobs for lunch duties, a teacher gives up their lunch to supervise the lunchroom. We didn't have those, I mean, that's what supervises the lunchrooms in the schools.
Okay.
You'd never have, you'd never have volunteers to do-
No, but there were, the, what I am talking about are the people that gave up their lunch to have a classroom, or have an extra class.
Covered plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
We did reduce that dramatically, but, wow, yeah, we have reduced that.
Okay, so this is just someone to watch the lunchroom?
Right, it's a supervisor for the lunchroom.
There used to be fifty or sixty or more.
Well, we were definitely, that position of the covered planning period was way out of control.
It was equivalent of like ten over the formula, something like-
Forty-two positions.
But I mean, but ten, I mean, the actual pay was ten over the formula, something like that, so. Yeah, I mean, that's considerable.
Okay, so once again, back to the online communication. If somebody, if we're getting rid of the position, and somebody has left, why would we be filling it? And I guess that goes to you, Todd. What?
The position would never abolish during personal-
Okay, so it has to be abolished?
We have to do away with the position. We have to do away with it, we have to eliminate the position.
Really? Well, can I ask a question on personnel? How many, I mean, this is something that we always talk about, and I know it's a sore subject with some of us, Jimmy. How many freshman football teams did we have?
Right now, you have, you have freshman football schedules, but, you know, then, then when, then when the season starts, you start to have injuries, you start to see that a lot of the schools can't put kids in those positions. And so they incorporate them into the JV program. And then that freshman coach coaches then with the high school. And actually, you know, their contract is a shorter season, but they end up working extra and really aren't paying as much.
Well, my question is, how many freshman football teams do we have?
All right, right now, two.
Okay, two. How many freshman football coaches or head football coaches are we paying?
We're paying, we're paying five.
Okay. Now, my point on this, once again, and I understand what you're saying. We need to abolish the freshman football coach position, because this is the first time we've even had two teams, correct? In one.
No, Bridgeport's had.
I, I know, we always have had one, but, I mean, this is the first time we've had, I've been on the board for six years, and we've been paying a freshman head football coach for six years, and Bridgeport has been the only school to have a team. So what I would suggest, because I don't feel comfortable with that, I think that's misleading. And if you feel that position should be there, then we should have a head football coach, and then a list of assistants, and reevaluate the pay grade and how many each is allowed. Because Bridgeport actually has a coach coaching a freshman team. Whereas all the other schools are taking that coach and have extra help on their high school team. And Bridgeport doesn't have that, because Bridgeport has an actual freshman team. All I'm saying is, and it's not to, you know, risk any injuries or anything, but I don't feel comfortable when we are voting on, or saying, "Hey, we're gonna pay a freshman head coach," and we don't have him. I just think the position should be abolished and given another name, and maybe that whole thing redesigned for next season.
I think, and Chris, and you have me consistent with that point, and it's an excellent point. What we were saying is, is every, except probably for South Harrison, every, we all start with freshman team. Because, you know, freshmen are younger, and you work with them separately. And then through attrition, the guys get hurt after a while, then you gotta start moving some guys around. And don't misconstrue that a freshman schedule does not also have, there's a freshman, and perhaps there's not a team, but you're working with freshmen, you designate somebody to work with those, those freshmen over there, working on plays, working on blocking skills, tackling skills, all that stuff like that. So they are working with freshmen, I would suggest probably everybody except South Harrison, I would guess.
Because South Harrison has freshmen as well.
Yeah, but I mean, now if they work with-
And I'm not saying they don't deserve someone to watch them or to coach them.
Work with them, no, no, I mean directly.
What I'm saying is, let the head coach do that under his position with assistants, so it's fair across the board for all of our high schools.
But they're designating one person to work with the freshman.
Hey, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to talk by, but Coach Jimbo Dawson's here from South Harrison, and so we got him here.
Is that Jimbo Dawson?
Yeah, like he's not even in the, in the arena.
You guys just get right ahead, Todd.
No, no. Were you not the freshman coach?
I am the head freshman.
Okay, how many freshmen do you have?
I had no idea, I'm just, I mean, I'm glad to-
You have eleven. So that, there's no way you can have eleven and have a freshman schedule and what have you.
So I have nine.
But you also-
We had more than that, Sal.
Yeah, but you have all, of course. All right, so yours have all moved up to the JV and varsity group in dress. And you, I was down at Daughtry County the other night, when you was out there coaching your R out, and all. And your kids, you know, are playing on the varsity team. Okay? And you're putting in your time, working with not only your freshmen, but also the sophomores and juniors and seniors, so.
He's a varsity football coach assistant. And I just really think, I'm not saying, you, I know what you're doing, I'm not saying you aren't doing your job, because you don't have a freshman team, you just don't show up. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, we just need to have a new description for those positions. If we're voting, I know what you're saying, but we are voting on a head freshman football coach. And there are not freshman teams, just put freshman supervisor, football supervisor. But you know what I'm saying, when you have a head coach, I just think it should all fall under, it's just my opinion, the head football coach, and then he designates his assistants. Head football coach, he gets four assistant coaches. So every school has the same across the board.
You get paid as equivalent as an assistant coach. I mean, it's just, it's just a designation, it's a designation. But you're getting the same as the other assistant coaches, great.
It's not the same.
No?
It's not the same.
No.
It's less.
Oh, not, okay, all right.
It's less, Matt.
Is it, is it?
What, what I would propose, if it's okay with you, is that, you know, of course, we can't deal with any of this until personnel season.
Yeah.
But if you'd like, I can put together a committee, take a look at this, see what we can do from a personnel standpoint, and do some research to see if there, because I think what, what you're saying is, you'd like to see it reflect more accurately what your job script is.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
So there's some logistics there, and- So there's some logistics there and, uh, so, but, and, and then, you know...
I mean, because our freshman coaches could, yeah, I mean, like you just said, once they're hired, it doesn't matter if they have a team or not, you still get paid. I mean, if we had some real nasty people we hired, they could simply say, well, I don't have a team, I'm not going to show up, it's still collect their salary. I mean, not that that's not going to happen, but I'm just saying you have too many variables for something that is undefined and that's non-existent.
Yeah, but, but when we're hiring, here's, here's the concern I have. When we're hiring freshman coaches, and your prime example, you had enough people, enough students to field a team this year. Now, for whatever reason, those students went down, so are, we, we've already hired him as a freshman coach. We can't pull that away from him until the next personnel season.
No. No, I'm not saying pulled away, I'm not saying that at all. But let's say he wasn't a real nice, decent man. Why don't I sleep, Frank?
We can't make any changes.
He just said, no, no, no.
We can't make any changes until the personnel season.
I've only said this for four years. Let's say, you know, he, he wasn't a great coach and loved the squad and he doesn't have a team. He could, he doesn't have to help the high school. I mean, he doesn't have a freshman team. We still have to pay him and he doesn't even have to show up or anything because we did that.
No, he would have to show up. But what, I think I understand...
I'm just saying define it.
And we could, I mean, we could definitely take a look at it.
Hey, we will, that's...
The big thing is personnel, your job description, you know, we, we could take a look at it to see if it can more accurately...
Well, my biggest problem is with Bridgeport. Because Bridgeport actually has a freshman team, they are less one coach at their varsity. So it's unfair to them.
Well, actually, they're not.
Well, I mean, every year can vary, but what I'm saying theoretically, they are less one coach on their high school level because they actually have a team.
Right.
So instead of having this all mixed up, I just think it needs to be, to be defined next personnel season.
But they still report to the head coach. A head coach says, listen, I want you to work on this, I want you to work on that, and they still report, so the head coach still says, it, it's not one less coach, he still reports.
So actually, from where you come from, though, you are right, because he shouldn't, he's getting less paid than he would if he was just called an assistant coach.
I just think we need to look at it. That's all I've said for four, five years.
I, I coached 25 years and I figured it all up one time. I made 52 cents an hour.